All right, everybody, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. All right, well, good job, Jeff. We got the flag back up and going. We'll see if my camera turns back on, which is always a a fun adventure for me. Okay, it's back, good. Uh, all right, I'll go ahead and do a review of tonight's agendas, we usually do before we get into it. Um, I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. And then I'll get into the public um comment portion of the agenda for tonight. Jeff, did we have anybody um turn in to do any public comment tonight?
Uh, no, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, well, it sounds like we won't be doing public comment, and then we'll be moving ahead uh to our consent agenda for this evening. Our consent agenda has our city council meeting minutes for February twentieth meeting. Uh, we have a loan funding for Alder Creek Water Treatment Plant, raw water um conveyance, storage, and pumping improvements. We have the grant agreement approval for ODOT funding for uh the Transit Department. Then, under Old Business, we have the creation of an Advanced Financing Reimbursement District for three sixty second and Bell Street uh construction that here from our staff on and have a discussion about. And then, under New Business, uh, we'll be discussing the Deer Point Neighborhood Park Concept Planning. We'll then round off our evening with reports from our city manager and our council and committee reports. Uh, was there any questions for staff on tonight's agenda before we get moving into it? All right, hearing none, I will call for any proposed um changes to tonight's agenda. Hearing none, and knowing that we didn't get anybody to um submit for any public comment tonight, we'll move ahead. Uh, to the consent, yes?
I will call.
Would you? Do you like the, oh, I was gonna offer the roll call as well.
Oh, well, I I I'm the one that's off my game here. I was checking on you, Jeff. Um, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Maiden.
Present.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Excuse, but let's keep an eye on him.
Okay, Councilor Hockenson.
Here.
Mayor Pauling.
Here. All right, now that we got that out of the way, thank you, everybody. Um, let's move ahead to uh tonight's consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes for February twentieth, the loan funding for the Alder Creek Water Treatment Plant, um, and the grant agreement for the approval of the ODOT funding for the Transit Department. Unless there's questions for staff or discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
For a second.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. There's a motion from Councilor Sheldon and a second by Councilor Smallwood to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up. Aye. Oppose nay or a thumbs down. Uh, motion carries. Uh, with that, we'll get into Old Business, the creation of an Advanced Financing Reimbursement District for three sixty second and Bell Street Construction. Uh, welcome Jenny, do you wanna kick us off in this discussion?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, council. Um, to sum up, we met February fifth to discuss the consideration of an Advanced Financing Reimbursement District for the recently completed street project three sixty second and Bell Street. To sum up, council is interested in potentially creating a district, however, the primary goal is um fast development of the newly opened development parcels. And so, um, staff was sent to provide additional information to provide more context for the decision. There were several good ideas and recommendations. One was to explore additional SDC funding, which staff is considering, and will bring back to council at a separate meeting. Another suggestion was to look at urban renewal funding, again, a great um decision. Uh, again, will be brought back to you separately. Um, but in this case, we've come back to you with more information. There were several pieces that were requested. Uh, number one was some examples of reimbursement districts, so council could see loan interest rate terms values. Another one was to provide uh context of an estimate of land values. Council is uh wants to be very aware of how much uh as a percentage this might impact certain properties that are for sale. And finally, we were asked to provide a couple of different examples at three, four, and five percent interest rate to see what the value of these reimbursement districts would be, it's a year one and year twenty. So with that, we have collected this information, we have a presentation for you. And I have learned my lesson. Uh, this time, we think we're just gonna present all of the information to you and then open it up for the discussion, rather than trying to like hone you in. Um, so here I have this presentation going, and I am going to turn this over to A.J. Thorne, who has done the work on this project.
Jenny, can I just share my screen? It'll be easier that way.
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. I can find it.
There we go.
Right, are we seeing a presentation? All right, give me go. Now, if I can change slide, there we go. Right, so I'll skip through the parts that Jenny just covered, and we'll get into property valuation. Uh, at the suggestion of the council, we're just going with the assessed property values. In the interest of time, it would take a while to find out real market values for these properties. Uh, those are listed here. As you can see, the big property we're dealing with here is listed at twelve point seven million dollars. The property on the west side is one point seven five, and then we've got a few that are in the six to eight hundred thousand dollar range, and then this property here with the asterisks. I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but the uh sixteen three seventy, and I apologize for saying Royal Lane is now Bell Street, uh, is valued at four hundred and twenty-three thousand. I made a call to the tax assessor and found out that's because this property is in farm deferral. As that use changes, that value will represent more of a market value compared to what it's listed as currently.
And I'm gonna stop you right there. Um, Councilor Walker has a question, and I don't know if you can see it.
Yeah, I just.
There you are, Kathleen.
I I'm sorry, I'm not sure what direction, who gave the direction to look at assessed valuations. But assessed valuations are just what they pay on their taxes. It, you know, when they go to sell those properties, they're gonna go, you know, for, you know, at least uh RMV, which is on on, I was just like looking at my property tax bill because it's right here. And my my assessed valuation is half of what my real market value is, which we have those numbers already. And so I'm just very concerned that I understand the need, the interest to not overload the property values, but we'd be, we need to be looking at what the property values are that that property could sell for. And and that's, that's the first thing that I'm gonna say is that those values don't even reflect the fact that there's a road there. They could have been, you know, uh praised last time in nineteen, you know, two thousand fifteen or twenty or whatever it was, and there was nothing out there. And so obviously, if they went out there tomorrow and saw it go for a lot more, so we're already discounting that. But when we look at assessed valuation rather than RMV, which is easily, we have those figures. I'm really disappointed that it skews the whole thing and underestimates the effect of the on, you know, the the onus or the, uh, what do you call that, the the onus on the property, you know, by twice, you know, because like I said, it's mine's half of what you know, my my RMV is twice what my assessed valuation is, and if these in fact are are worth that or more, and probably more given that we spent twelve million dollars on a road there, then I'm not sure we're looking at accurate information here.
Um, Councilor Walker, I I I agree with you, um, and I can clarify. It would be a long process to engage people and redo the new values with the road. And so in the interest of time, what we've brought to you are admittedly lower values, but at least some information to provide some context. Um, so I I agree with everything that you have said.
But we have RMV in our database, right? The real market values of these properties in our database. Didn't you look that up, Don, when we were last time? Last time, the last meeting, you looked up and said something about, oh, that one's worth such, oh, I think maybe you looked on Zillow or whatever, but but still, my point is.
County records, so I think it's the same data. But point of order, cuz I thought we were gonna go through the entire presentation, then open up for discussion. Did I mishear that?
Yeah, and I I try, guys, remember, it's been a little while since we've been on Zoom, so if we can try to at least provide a little bit of a pause between speakers so that the mo- moderator, I guess that's me, could kind of interject and try to guide the ship, I'd appreciate it. Um, yeah, I wanted to provide staff an opportunity to respond to Kathleen's question there. Um, but let's uh let's go ahead and try to get through the bulk of this presentation and then open it up to uh questions and comments at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, so moving from property values, or we have a few examples of nearby and some somewhat similar AFRDs. Uh, I'm not gonna go through the list here, but as you can see, a lot of them are from other jurisdictions are related to sewer-only projects, so we're lacking a bit of an apples-to-apples comparison here. However, you can see there's a range of different interest rates from four up to six, uh, four percent fee up to a six percent simple interest rate. Uh, different valuations from a couple mil- or one point two million down to three hundred and thirty thousand. I I will speak to the Gresham Reimbursement District as it has no interest in a shorter ter- term. Uh, that was created for properties that were failing septic systems with no plan to develop in the near future. So in that sense, it was just an opportunity for these homes to get sewer without an inordinate, inordinate cost of installing, say, three hundred feet of sewer line down a main street. Uh, generally, Sandy, we've had a few different interest rates for our reimbursement districts. They've all been twenty-year terms. Okay, so here we've got a few different simple interest rates available to us, and again, I'm not gonna sit here and read you a bunch of numbers, but this is based off of what our proposed valuation is for her proportion of the project that we're seeking reimbursement for. So that would be these initial valuations here are based on that twenty percent uh proposed value that we were looking for this.
True, now, I'm worried about, I'm worried about doing this, council, so please, let's all be careful with this. Especially these number slides can get pretty much in the weeds, but since we have so much information presented on this slide, is there any questions um for staff on this slide? Okay, great, let's go ahead and move.
What do you, I'm sorry, what do you mean by the initial valuation?
The, so our proposal tonight is gonna be reimbursement for twenty percent of the uh road and storm portion of this project. And this value here, rep, the initial valuation represents what those properties would owe under our proposal tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so you've seen this slide before. This is just showing that we spent twelve point nine million dollars on this project. Uh, that split between, obviously, the majority of it was the construction of the road itself, and then separately, we pulled out the water and sewer portions, which are serving those properties on the east end of our roadway. There's uh one point five million dollars in right-of-way acquisition, rest are utilities fees, and then the engineering for the project. So for this proposal, as I mentioned before, we have removed the sewer and water portions, and we'll have that uh funding will just be covered by those funds.
Um, if I could add one more piece as to a reason why. Um, we're trying to be very simple and straightforward with this AFRD, and the water and the sewer lines are not applied to all of the properties, so it gets a little bit confusing when you look at dollars and impacts. So, um, it's also just cleaner and easier to explain, and the street fund itself is really the one that doesn't have uh a lot of income and really um needs the reimbursement compared to the water and sewer fees. Um, Mayor, I don't know if you're calling on on hands up, or should I?
You, gosh, gonna get reused to this. Uh, Kathleen, I see your hand up. Is it something that can wait to the end, or if it's on this? Part, oh, okay.
It's on this part. So just, can you clarify for us, uh, since you're talking about the, you know, total cost of the project? Wasn't there like a five million dollar bond to help pay for that out of the street fund that we're gonna be paying for quite a few years?
Correct. It was.
Was it five million? I don't recall.
Uh, it was.
Six million, like five point nine, something like that.
Right about there.
Six point nine?
Five point nine.
Five point nine, okay, all right. So so that's just another thing that we're gonna be paying out of our street fund for, how many years is it, a ten, twenty-year bond?
Twenty years.
How many?
Twenty.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and catch back up where we were.
All right, so what the proposal we'd like to put before the council tonight is twenty percent of the street fund contribution for this project. Uh, that will recoup roughly our uh operating budget that was contributed to this project. As I've mentioned, we're getting rid of the water and sewer contribution and still keeps this thing economically positive for potential developers. And then this total AFRD is twelve point four eight million dollars. So here's a quick view of what this looks like uh as an encumbrance to each of these properties here. Uh, the big one is the one point four eight million on our large property here, roughly eleven percent of that assessed, tax-assessed property value. And then we've got another asterisk down here in the corner where my mouse is gone, but uh down here in the corner where this property's valuation puts it at eighty percent, however, that is the one that's in tax deferral, so that valuation is not terribly useful for this case. And then an alternative is looking at a ten percent of our uh project value, so as you can see, it's roughly half or exactly half of what was on the last slide here. And that brings the large property down to seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. All right, so as council asked, oh. Councilor Hockenson, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just on the allocation to the individual properties. We talked about it in our previous meeting, but can you refresh our memory as to what algorithm or that you're using to allocate that that uh total AFRD to those properties? Was it square footage or?
I apologize, yes, it's based on the square footage of developable, developable area for each of these properties.
Right.
So this slide is just showing uh basically the tabular version of these last two slides included with the thirty percent rate which we showed you at the last meeting here. Uh, there's not a whole lot to say about it. If there's any questions, I would, for this particular slide, I can open that up real quick, but if not, I'll keep moving.
Yes, let's go ahead and keep moving. Thank you.
So, our municipal code prescribes a nine percent simple interest rate for reimbursement districts with the council having the ability to set these terms. Uh, again, the standard length prescribed in the municipal code is twenty years, but there are other options available. We could go more, we could go less, we could do a ten plus ten, which we've seen in a few other districts. And that would allow us to set it for ten years. Council can make a decision after ten years and decide if we want to extend it another ten years or an any other mikes at that point. Oh, and then, of course, the, if this fund, if these funds were not spent, they would be earning a percent compound interest in our bank account. Just something to consider. All right, so judging from our last meeting, we've seemed to have settled on the area method as it seems to be the most fair for all properties involved, so the questions for tonight will be does the, is the council in favor of uh creating a reimbursement district for these properties? If so, what value should we choose? And then we'll just have to select an interest rate and a term on that. And again, our recommendation is twenty percent of the project, two point four eight million dollars for twenty years with a five percent simple interest rate, based on the area method. So from this point, if we are directed to go forward, we will put a public notice out tomorrow, and we will have a public hearing for the resolution at council for our next meeting. And again, that's the fast track, that could be as early as March eighteenth. And now we can open up to discussion and question.
Thank you, no problem. It's pretty easy slide, so why don't we go and take this slide down so that we can see.
Is there anything that we would like to have open?
Oh, it's a good question. Do we have any questions that we think are gonna have us sliding back on the slide? All right, with that, let's go ahead and uh take this down, and I'm sure now that we said no, uh, our discussion.
It'll be back, of course.
Yeah, um, all right, uh, great presentation. I just wanna start by thank you to staff for taking direction of council from our last conversation and coming back with this. I thought it was a great presentation. Um, Jeff, also, please let the record reflect that I can now see Carl Exner. Welcome, uh, Carl, uh, to our meeting. I I'm not sure when you arrived, but it's good to see you. Um, and uh, let's uh open it up to discussion. Um, I guess I'm leaning towards uh, I I like the years, I like the interest rate, and I I could be talked between twenty percent and ten percent of the um of the overall um of the project, so interested to hear what council has to say. Don. Don and then Carl.
Thanks. Um, I I I can support the staff recommendation at this point in time. Uh, it just, the only thing I'm really against is doing that ten plus ten option because if we hang anything, a decision like that out there, all of a sudden, an election could become very political around that kind of decision, and that would seem to defocus us from other things. So I, whatever the term is, I think it needs to be determined.
Okay, thank you, Don. Um, Carl and Kathleen.
Yeah, I'm um in favor of doing it um and the cheaper route. I think the ten percent probably is preferable. One of the things I hear and the things I think about is is that we want people to buy into this property and to start developing and become a uh income for taxes and all the rest, unemployment, there's just a long list of wonderful things that this should be giving us, and so need to make it as economical as possible. But I wanna uh clean up our street fund account. That's something that has been lacking for a few years now, so I'd like to see that one get reimbursed. I'm also in favor of not having ten plus ten because it does add an element of uncertainty in there, and anytime you get uncertainty, people feel uncomfortable about being more involved in it, so keep it at maybe a ten-year. Um, I think that we need to do that in that range. And the last thing, I think we have to do something that's fair and logically explainable. And one of the things that I struggle with is if we try to use any kind of appraisal or hopeful possible values on market values on on these properties, we're gonna get all kinds of comments and confrontation about what that really does mean, what it could be, who develops it, what is the most important uh property uh that could be used on it. I I just think we need to use the statistics that the staff has put together. It doesn't maybe realize the most correct property value, but it gives me a relative differences between them, so I'm in favor of moving forward that way.
Thank you, Carl. Uh, with that, we'll go to Kathleen, and then Chris Maitens on deck.
Um, like I said, nobody's selling their properties for assessed valuation, ever. They're going for, you know, starting at RMV, real market value. That's what these things are worth. So the fact that we used assessed valuation, which greatly reduced the, you know, it's like sixty, sixty-five percent or something of the real market value, seemed to kind of tilt this whole presentation right off the get-go, kind of. The second thing I would say is our street fund got wiped out by this building. And again, let me just preface everything, it's great road, it's serving a lot of folks, and it's gonna hopefully spur development and all that. I think we all have common ground and un- understanding there. But it also wiped out our street fund, and six million dollars is still owed to the street fund after we just try to make it whole. So we're not making the street fund whole by by this proposal at all. We've got six million dollars that we're gonna be continuing to pay the street fund to to pay back this, the six million dollars, which means six million dollars worth of other things that the street fund was supposed to cover, and including just the, you know, the TSP stuff and the um street maintenance that we do, you know, the street maintenance that we do on everybody's roads is going to get, become fewer, you know, a shorter list and a longer time to get things done. So I'm really concerned that I'm not looking kind of at apples and apples here, because again, when you preface everything with the interest of trying to not burden the properties too much, but you're using the assessed valuation to determine that, and and I'm not talking about go out and get new uh uh, you know, appraisals or anything like that. I'm just saying, we already have the, uh, you know, the RMVs, we need to be using those. It's a starting point. And then also just understanding how much the street fund bond, the bond payment to refunds, the six million dollars in the street fund is gonna be costing us for the next twenty years. So I just feel like I, it's hard for me to make a decision at this point because I don't think we have good data to assess all that. I think, and I don't, but I don't think it's a major deal to kind of just re- redo the numbers with the RMVs and and go from there. That said, I'm, you know, I think we should be looking for thirty percent, because again, thirty percent, we're seventy percent of the project costs are gonna be covered by the city. And and I thought it should be fifty percent when we first started. I can be talked out of that because, you know, I understand the idea of of incentives for development and all that, but giving this huge, you know, basically, you're talking about two million dollars, that's ten million dollars that we're giving to the owners of these properties. Ten million dollars, and and we're, and that, that, you know, it's not a gift, a free gift, that's coming out of the taxpayers of Sandy's um pockets, and I just can't I can't go there. I, it not, not now, not ever. I, like I said, I'd be closer to thirty, and I wanna see the RMVs to really get a picture of what these, what these lands are worth. I'd love to see it, uh, you know, a rough appraisal of it, but if if we're not gonna take the time to get that, I a minimum RMV would be a better analysis of really what we're talking about here as far as how how much of a burden this is, because if these properties are actually worth double what we're talking uh shown here, that's, you know, that I think our our numbers would be, I I think we we'd all feel better about it, so that's, that's where I'll go right now.
Thank, thank you, Kathleen. Um, I see a number of hands up, but I'd like to do start with um Tyler, I wanna give, and then I'll go to Jenny. I wanna allow staff an opportunity to respond to those went up during Kathleen's remarks. Uh, then we'll go to Chris. I'm gonna interject myself between Chris and Don, cuz I gotta get in here at some points. Uh, so I'm gonna get in there, and then we'll go to Don. So with that, why don't we start with Tyler?
Thank you, Mayor. I I just wanna um correct a typo that's in the staff report and and address Councilor Walker's concern. The numbers that are referenced in this uh document are the market value, it's not the assessed value. You look at the large, the largest parcel on that screen, the actual assessed value of that uh parcel is only about two hundred and ninety thousand, but the uh market value of that land is the the twelve point seven numbers that's referenced there, so uh apologies for that typo in the staff report, but it is the the market value that's been used, not the assessed value.
Thank you for that, Tyler. Jenny, um, did you ask?
Uh, yes, thank you. I I wanted to address a point. I'm in favor of obviously topping up the street fund. One of the things as staff we realized was this project had multiple goals. Um, specifically, it was to relieve traffic congestion as well as create, you know, that create that emergency bypass and access. And that's why we we bonded against the gas tax revenue. So that's why, after initially considering much higher um AFRDs, we were convinced to come. So that's why after initially considering much higher, um, AFRDs, we were convinced to come in with the. Kind of around the thirty percent mark that we came to you on February fifth. So, um, again, there's a, a balance and we felt development was part of this, which is why. You know, we're coming in at about the twenty percent value because that's what it'll take to remake the street operations fund whole. Which is really where my concern is right now, so we can consider doing what we need to do, um, to, you know, maintain the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. With that, let's go to Chris.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Jenny took all my good words. That's what I was going to say too. I want to say thanks to the staff because the valuations that you gave, I, I was, I was going to ask, I was pretty sure those are market values after my conversation. You and I had Taylor on Friday, um, and it basically, it doesn't matter really to me what they value at, as long as all of them are appraised equally. At the right amount, because then it gives me a context to know what the assessed rate you want to apply for each property, you know, how they align with each other. Uh, so with that being said, I'm all for the twenty year term, I'm all for the, the rate as far as the, the percentage. I would lean more towards the, the ten percent is my favorable spot. Um, I want to create less of a burden for developers to come in and actually get in the property. Um, I do understand wanting developers to have to pay for their use of, of that land and, and help us, you know, recover some of our costs. But I, I don't want to create a barrier for people coming in, especially on sites that while they're large, they're off the beaten path a little bit. Um, so I, I'd like to be a little bit lower to attract the business in there. Um, I could be persuaded to twenty if the argument was convincing enough, but I, I shoot for ten, uh, the five in the twenty year term. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. As promised, I just wanted to add something to the conversation real quick. One is, I agree with a lot of what you just said there, Chris. Uh, vast majority of it, maybe all of it. Um, one thing I wanted to add in that I feel like gets lost in the reimbursement of the street fund conversation. And, and I, I too want to reimburse some of that fund for what we have spent. But, uh, we don't spend enough time talking about the development of those properties, the raising of the tax revenue. Um, and the taxable, uh, revenue that the city is going to get, um, with the development of those, of those properties. Uh, the system development charges, uh, that will be assessed, that will also be going into our street fund and our water and stormwater and wastewater funds. Uh, so while this is reimbursing for past, I know system development charges go for future. Uh, we are talking about replenishing our street fund and the development of these properties and incentivizing those to develop is part of. Um, you know, part of the equation of, of replenishing those funds. Um, with that, uh, Don, I see your hand up.
Hey, thanks. Um, I'll put it down. Uh, so first of all, I just want to go back to a couple of comments. Um, for when Kathleen, when you were talking about the, the need for those values and how important they are. I just, I think it's really important that the values of the land really have nothing to do with the methodology we're proposing. We're, we're taking that fixed amount of money, whether it's ten, twenty or thirty percent, and we're allocating it based off the developable land. I didn't come out right, but you know what I meant. Uh, so it, and so when we did ask for it, it was just kind of a nice to have, so we had kind of understood the burden. But it, it's not, it's not critical that we have great values. The second thing, uh, I do like twenty percent. I support the twenty percent because I think it gets us closer. Staff's put a lot of thought into it. But I brought up a concept last time, we haven't talked about it, which is maybe incentivizing the right developer with urban renewal dollars. And I still think that gives us some control on what kind of development we have. And, uh, more so than just, you know, setting it at ten percent. So I would have no issue supporting, uh, you know, a, a, a help from an urban renewal. To bring in the right entity to offset potentially any or all of this, if it's the right, right situation.
Thank you, and thank you for everybody's input and questions and discussion. What I'd like to do now is start to try to guide us to a motion. Um, that I think that we can start to get behind. Um, I see your hand up, Kathleen. I do though, and I'm going to go to you. But I would like to put, um, Rich and Lori on the spot a little bit. Um, to hear, uh, what direction you're leaning as far as, as the percentage goes.
Uh, yeah, two comments on that, uh, real quick. One is, I kind of am leaning more toward the ten percent myself, to be quite honest. Um, but also, if memory serves me right from the last meeting, I didn't think this entire plot, this entire. Uh, three hundred and sixty second, all the properties in there were all inside the urban renewal.
I believe they are all inside the urban renewal. Please correct me if I'm wrong, staff.
The properties considered for the reimbursement district are, there are a block of properties just south of that large property. South of Bell that are still not annexed into the city. There's three, three properties down below there, but they're not included in the reimbursement district.
Um, Rich?
Uh, I'm happily ready to talk, but I see Tyler has his hands up and I'd just like to hear what he has in response to that.
Rich, all right, Tyler.
Uh, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to add, um, one piece of information because Mayor, you touched on this, and that was the property tax revenue. Just to help, in an effort to paint the picture, right, of what something might look like there. If we look at a, um, commercial development on the south side of Highway twenty-six, Fred Meyer, that's on about nine acres of land. And it's a roughly ninety-three thousand dollars a year in property tax revenue between the city of Sandy and our renewal district. So just to, to your point, Mayor, talking about, you know, future growth and, and future tax collection. Uh, we've got nearly a hundred acres of developable land over there. Uh, nine acres off the other side of the highways, getting us almost a hundred thousand dollars a year in property tax revenue, so.
I don't blame you for, I don't blame you for unmuting, Kathleen. I'm going to YouTube. Not gonna, I'm not going to pun over you again. Go ahead.
No, can, can you just repeat those nu, the numbers? I, I heard nine acres and you, you mentioned urban renewal tax, but also general.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so Fred Meyer, that, that parcel of land there where the Fred Meyer is, that's just under nine acres. And they pay about ninety-three thousand dollars in taxes between the city of Sandy and the urban renewal district. So I was just trying to paint that picture of what future commercial development on the side of Highway twenty-six would mean for property tax collection.
Kathleen, I see you still have your hand up. Would you like to go before I go back to Rich?
Go ahead and go to Rich.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think Rich needs to go.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad I'm so easily awaited for him. So I, I lean towards the twenty percent, and, and the logic behind that is, um, we've made a sizable investment. Um, for, for reasons that I understand a little bit, but I also want to go back to just what Tyler pointed out. And I remember even our previous conversation where Fred Myers gives about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And so, I mean, to make up that difference of ten percent, you're at, you're at twenty years before we even start to recoup. Um, where we, that, that extra little bit that we're behind. Um, I, I do feel that development should pay, uh, the good chunk of that. Um, but I also feel, I'm also not opposed to hearing further about what Don's idea is with urban renewal. Um, in, in that we can have a little bit of more say on who gets to develop in there as well.
Cool. Thank you for that. My guess is, is I think where Don's going on that is just to send, if we go with the twenty percent instead of ten percent. That urban renewal give us some tools to continue to incentivize those potential buyers. Um, Kathleen, did you have an additional point before I go to Don and then Lori?
Yeah, I think I was, um, first of all, I want to, uh. You know, apologize about the appraised values, because I thought, oh, you know, that, that's, that's a big. Aha, uh, so I appreciate that those are RMVs and not AVs, so that does kind of, you know, put it in a different light. Um, the, the other thing that we mentioned and talked about last time was the opportunity to, um, with the SDCs. Um, and I, I know we're going to be looking at our SDCs for TSP plan, um, and I forget what the name term is. Um, but it basically recouping costs from, you know, recently big ticket items. And I, I know there's a term for that in the Parks and Trails Master Plan, and we talked about the opportunity to use that. Because again, SDCs are usually future thing, future projects, and since this one just got done, there was some, what's the term, Jenny? Can you refresh my memory? Reim, uh, yeah.
Uh, I can, well Jenny, unmute yourself. Reimbursement SDC.
Okay, all right, reimbursement SDC. So, um, yeah, and it's just. It, it would help me to understand, you know, how much we could get back with the reimbursement SDC on this in the future. And, um, because that would, you know, color my thoughts on the rest of it. Um, the other thing that kind of comes into play again is, you know, our, our street fund is going to be. You know, we, we cleaned it out, but it's going to be stressed for, for the next twenty years while we're paying back that bond. So that's kind of my concern is that, yes, we might reimburse what this, what it had. But, but then we've also, you know, burdened it with this large bond payment. And then the last part that I wanted to just kind of, you know, I, I guess. I think we're well placed and well prepared to welcome some development here. You know, and it's going to be really hard for me to say that, well, you know, we didn't want to, you know, burden Costco or whatever it is. With more than ten percent of reimbursement for how much we spent. That doesn't really. Look good for any of us to kind of say, well, you know, we, we swallowed ninety percent of the cost and let, and, and asked Costco for the other ten percent. So, or whatever it was, whatever the big, whatever is going to be developed there. So I am concerned about just the optics of all that and the fact that. Yeah, we, we aren't giving these kind of things to, to other developers. The last thing I would just ask about is, is with those three properties that didn't, that are not in the city limits and obviously benefit from this. What is the opportunity to, you know, when they. Annex in to get anything from them, because I'm sure they're going to be using the road and not, you know, coming off of the highway.
Um, thank you, Kathleen.
I think that's it, but I'm still at like twenty percent at least if we're voting, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Don?
So I tried to share that just to, because to Lori's point, I think she is right. Uh, if this map from twenty twenty-two is still correct, that these properties, the, the smaller valued properties are not in the urban renewal. So the proposal that I have would be sweet for these larger parcels, but would not be applicable to these others. That was it.
Thank you. Lori? Lori, you're muted.
Apparently I'm out of, out of, out of rope with this too, so, yeah, uh, thanks for that, uh, Don, because I froze while I was. When I asked my other question, so I didn't hear any of the answers, so I appreciate that. Also, just, uh, you know, something of note is, we developed this road to better this community. And better the city of Sandy, not just with the intention of it being developed, developable. Um, you know, that's obviously a bonus. It's a bonus for the property owners. It's going to be a bonus for us down the road. But I don't necessarily feel like the entire onus of the, of that road should be on, on new development. You know, that benefits the current citizens as well, so, um. Yeah, I, I, I don't necessarily disagree that development should pay for itself, but I also don't think that it should be an unfair burden on development either.
As I go to Carl, I'd like individual counselors to start considering whether or not you can get to twenty percent. I'm hearing, um, I'm just kind of hearing a lot of consensus around that number, so if you feel like you need to argue under it, start thinking about how to do that. But I am feeling it go that direction. Uh, Carl?
Yeah, I just, right up front, twenty percent is okay with me. To me, it doesn't matter if we use real market or assessed value. It's the differences between the two different, the several different properties that make a difference about which one pays their fair share. And it's the end number, the total number that will make the difference. We can play with that one all we want to. But I am for trying to reimburse, at least to some degree, the street fund. Don't think we need to put it all, I'm, I'm like Lori at trying to save time here. I would agree with Lori's comments about this is more than just. Getting these lands developed, uh, and also though, we need to get these lands developed. We have a, a long history since I've been on, in the city, not just on council, but in the city. So not getting a lot of economic development from developers building, uh, properties. And you can name almost on one hand, the properties that have developed, the Walgreens and the. Good, and the goodwill and those kind of things, but we need to get some of these lands up and running, and they have a long list of benefits beyond just. Getting our street fund paid for, so I'm in favor of the twenty and getting this moved forward.
And, and so I go to Chris, I'm hearing a lot of repeated points, so if you want to start getting to a motion, that would be great. Um, Chris?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to, uh, copy off of what, uh, councillor Smallwood said too. Uh, that road was, at least I've only been on city council for a year and a couple of months, but, uh, I remember when it went up for approval. We, we didn't talk to any developers or potential developers about it. We did it for the betterment of Sandy and the community itself. And I completely am against saying that the burden should be exclusively on the developers to pay for that, a period. I think they have a, I think they have a part of it, and it may even be a big part of it. And I started off saying I was at ten percent, five in, in twenty years. Um, I'm still at ten, five and twenty, except for, for one thing. I, I, I like what councillor, uh, Hokinson said about the potential to use the, the funds to help. Create an incentive for those two properties, which are, those are the two properties I'm focused on. The small ones are, are insignificant dollars. It's those two large parcels. And if we're able to do something in that direction, I too would support twenty-five and twenty.
So, uh, I would say, Don, why don't, um, you make the motion on this? And why don't you consider in that motion, um, directing the Economic Development Committee to provide us with recommendations. On incentives that we could possibly use out of the urban renewal fund for those two properties.
Very good. I move to direct the city manager to prepare a resolution for the creation of an advanced funding reimbursement district. For the construction of three sixty-second and Bell Streets for consideration at a city council public hearing. The district is to be valued at two million, four hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, based off our twenty percent model we've been looking. Uh, and is to use the area apportionment methodology. The district is to expire after twenty years and use a simple interest rate of five percent.
Wonderful.
And I would like to direct staff to, um, do as the mayor said, and to look at options for incentivizing. Having the urban renewal board or the urban renewal district, uh, incentivize, uh, development there.
Wonderful. Let's hear a second.
Very good.
There's a motion by councillor Hokinson and a second by councillor Exner. All those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Oppose aye or a thumbs down? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for the vigorous debate and back and forth and the, uh, ability to get to consensus. And thank you to staff for all of your hard work and diligence on this. Uh, before I wrap up and move forward, I see Kathleen has a hand up.
Sorry, hey, just that whole SDC reimbursement thing, is that going to be in the TSP in the future, you know, when we, when it comes to us?
That'll be part of the discussion.
Oh, go ahead, Tyler.
Yep, that will be part of the discussion when we bring back the transportation SDCs.
All right.
In the near future. I don't have the date in front of me, but in the near future.
Wonderful. Thank you, AJ and Jenny. Really appreciate the presentation. All right, let's move ahead to new business where we have the Deer Point Neighborhood Park Concept Planning. Uh, welcome, Rochelle.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, good to be here in virtual mode tonight. Um, just wanted to quickly tee up Deer Point Park. Tonight we have with us Kurt Lango and Brian Martin with Lango Hansen Landscape Architects. And they're going to be presenting three conceptual plans for Deer Point Park tonight. And just a little bit of a review, so Deer Point Park is located on the east side of the city. And it is identified in the Parks and Trails Master Plan as a priority park. And this park is going to serve a neighborhood in an area of Sandy that has been patiently waiting for improvements of that parcel for many, many years. And just recently with the dedication of the, um, parkland next to the development, that property is now a little over three acres. So the design and the improvement of the park also meets council goals for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five biennium. And so Lango Hansen and staff have been working closely with the Parks and Trails Advisory Board to, um, receive their input. And incorporate that input into the feedback of the conceptual designs that you are going to see this evening. And staff would like to know from council if there's anything that you see in the three conceptual designs that perhaps we're missing. Or you'd like to see a little bit differently, and that would be prior to those conceptual designs going to the public. So next steps do include two public open houses, actually one this week, March sixth. And then we have another open house scheduled for, um, April eighteenth regarding additional public engagement. We did send out approximately a hundred direct invites to the neighbors of the park, inviting them to the open houses. And then we're going to follow up with the neighbors by sending out, um, a, the park survey, asking them to provide their feedback and returning those. Um, surveys back to us. So I guess with that quick overview and, and Kurt and Brian, thank you for being here tonight. I'll, I'll hand it over to them and we'll, we can end with questions. Be back.
Thank you, Rochelle. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Rochelle. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. It was. Um, just over a year ago that we were in front of this group with, uh, this team. Talking about what is now Cedar Park and really had very robust turnout for that and great public engagement. Great comments from council and the mayor. Wonderful experience working with Rochelle and her team. And then ultimately it is breaking ground out there and moving forward. So we're very excited about that. And just, just as excited to be moving on to this park as well. So I'm going to be sharing my screen here. And can everyone see the picture of Deer Point here? Great. So I want to just walk through, uh, some of the existing conditions, give some context for everyone, a point of discussion. Uh, some background information on neighborhood parks, some of the master plan, Parks and Trails Master Plan. And then as Rochelle mentioned, get into a couple of potential options for the site design layout for the park. And the picture here, uh, just for everyone's reference, this is the, uh, parcel for Deer Point Park. You see just in the far background, Highway 26. So this is looking roughly north. Half the park right now is this, uh, kind of open lawn. Then a really good stand of trees on the eastern half of the site and then, um, significant undergrowth as well. So before we dive into the specifics of, uh, Deer Point Park and that site, just taking a step back and looking at. Uh, the broader picture within Sandy and this map here shows each of the parks within the Sandy, um. Portfolio here. We have the Cedar Park, which we were just discussing. And then at the far east end of town, just inside the urban growth boundary, here's Deer Point Park. Defined as a, uh, neighborhood park. This, it's maybe a little bit small, but this orange hatch represents the, the half mile radius. Which is in essence, the catchment area for what defines the neighborhood, basically loosely associated with that park itself. Um, some of the nearby parks are Meinig Park downtown. Then Cascadia Park to the southwest and a little bit further out is Bornstedt Park. And this in the Parks and Trails Master Plan was identified as a service gap. There are no parks. Serving directly this newer development on this edge of town. And as we start to think about the park design itself, we want to, um, one thing that's important is we present to the public. Is to remind them that this is a neighborhood park, whereas Cedar Park was a community park, which reaches out to a much. Larger, uh, audience, people coming from a farther distance and being served by that. Um, Deer Point Park is really more for targeted towards those people living within walking distance or a very short drive. That half a mile distance to the park. And there's a whole list of characteristics here. It's generally going to be smaller, two to five acres in size. And with that, we typically don't see parking lots, given the, the proximity of people coming. Don't necessarily have restrooms, considering people can, um, more easily get to their own home. We do see features like playgrounds, sport courts and, and just open lawn flexible space. And, um, really making sure that it serves a, a multiple, a variety of users, not just one single type. Looking at the Parks and Trails Master Plan, this site was studied and identified as a priority. And in center in the screen here is the, uh, rough concept that was included in the Parks and Trails Master Plan. Identifying a number of potential uses for the site, but not really. Um, nailing it down and writing in pens, so to speak, but just putting forth some ideas of what could happen at the park. So some open lawn for maybe mul- multi-use playfields, potentially a sport court playground. This shows a couple of shelters and then this blue dashed line is circulation, pedestrian circulation throughout the park. And you also see some picnic tables and also important to note, um. A pedestrian connection to the high, um, to the sidewalk adjacent to Highway 26. As we start to zoom in on the site itself, this slide shows. The park site outlined in this bold black color. In the context of the neighborhood as it is developed so far, essentially to the east and to the south of the park site. You have Highway 26 adjacent to the park, running, um, diagonally right next to the park. And then this un, uh, to, to date undeveloped parcel. I believe this group has seen some plans for the, um, the Bull Run Terrace subdivision plan. So. That being the potential development to the east of the park and keeping that in mind as we develop options as well. And then lastly, Sandy Vista across the highway, but no, no real, um. Potential pedestrian connections being proposed at this time. So it's not really seen as serving Sandy Vista, but just. For sense of where that this is at.
See Kathleen?
Yeah, I'm just going to just, uh, remind folks that the stuff to the east is 192 apartments and eight duplexes. So 200 units, uh, of directly, the, directly to the east is that commercial high density. And, and the stuff just further is high density. So, um, and we know now that commercial can be, uh, you know. Converted to residential and all that. So anyway, that's what's coming there to the east. That's going to be using this park too.
Thank you, councillor. So this slide shows, um, a more zoomed in view, starting to look at the specific characteristics of this site. The park proper is just over three acres in size. And it is definitely not flat. There's. A high point at the south end, then a high point over by Highway 26. And then over the, the course of the park, it drops about 25 feet. So that's always in each of our schemes, that's something that we were always. Considering is how to deal with that elevation and make, use it to our advantage and make the park, um, navigable. And accessible for all. As I had mentioned earlier, there are a number of, uh, significant evergreen and deciduous trees really located on the eastern half of the site. So making every effort to preserve any of those trees that are in good shape. There's a few of them that aren't and those are of lesser value, but there's some really great trees to, to really incorporate into our designs. There are some couple of drainage structures on site, um, as part of the original subdivision. Those were. Brought onto the site to deal with some of the offsite drainage flowing onto the site. And as I mentioned before, it's basically bisected with open lawn on what is the, the left side in this view and. Larger evergreens with blackberry undergrowth on the right side. And currently, uh, Meadow has a, the, the road improvements on the park side just include a curb. It's been graded out, but there's no sidewalk beyond the curb. So those are improvements that would be included as the park is developed. Sidewalk and street trees and, and those other right of way improvements. So before we got into the actual options, um, in talking with the Parks Department and then this. Um, I think Rochelle mentioned, we have met with the Parks and Trails Advisory Board a couple of times. Put this slide out there just to start to get the creative juices flowing, to get responses from people. Here are a number of options of different amenities and elements that can be included in Deer Point Park. Uh, definitely don't have to include all of them, some of them and other elements beyond this, we're totally open. Um, including, you know, we see a sport court here, walking paths, the shelter, playground. Open lawn areas and any other park elements. So as we start to look at the options. On the next several slides, keep in mind that, uh, we, there's. This is still in the early planning stages and we, we, we want your feedback in terms of. Are we showing everything that we should be showing? Are there things that we shouldn't be showing? Or are there missing elements that we should consider incorporating into the park? So this is the first of three options that we wanted to discuss with you tonight. And if we start at the south end of the park here, the intersection of Fawn and Meadow, this is the height, one of the high points elevation wise. Entering into the park, uh, through a set of stairs and right beside that, an accessible ramp that leads to. A basically a mini pedestrian plaza, opening up into a half court basketball court there. Similar to the location that was identified in the master plan for this site. Then the, uh, pedestrian pathway makes its way down the grade. Uh, some, you'll see these small picnic tables or benches and picnic tables. These are some of those existing trees that we're looking at preserving, grading around those, keeping them in place. Midpoint into the park, the pedestrian pla- path splits and creates a looped pedestrian experience. To the right, the trail splits off and ultimately connects to a proposed sidewalk. That will go between the park itself and the highway. And just for point of reference, the, that sidewalk stops right here. It was constructed up to this point of the park property. I believe with, with this sub- adjacent subdivision and connects almost all the way back to town, but not continuously to downtown. There's still a few gaps in, but does lead up to the.
I'd like to jump in here real quick on the part of the meeting where it was mentioned to jump in on things that we'd like to see enhanced. Um, it's March, what is today? Shoot, it's March 4th. Spring break is three weeks away and we're on Zoom because there's snow outside. And yet I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, someone, I don't believe we have a single covered basketball court. Um, in the, uh, within the city of Sandy on any of our playgrounds. Um, I mean, I don't know if it's just some sort of outrageous expense. I'm certainly not suggesting we enclose these things.
You're going to go ice rink, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, right. You know me, I just, I got nephews and, and folks that play basketball. I, I hear them in my ear, Uncle Stan, what are we doing? Uh, so what are we doing? Is there, I mean, I guess I'm looking at you Rochelle. I mean, what's, why don't we have any covered courts? Or can, are they really expensive? Can we cover a court for not too much of an additional cost?
Yeah, I think you made, that's a good question. Um, the answer is yes. I mean, we can look at what it would cost to cover any of the basketball courts. That are currently in our system and that, if that's feedback, that's, um, we're interested in, in, um, seeing here for Deer Point. That's something we can. Get costs on and incorporate if a basketball court is decided that this would be the location for it. Um, so yeah, that's definitely something we can keep in the, in the back of our mind and, and. Fundraise for and look at doing.
To be frank, just, I, I don't see any other plans are happening in my lifetime right now, um, for covered courts in Sandy. You know, like, so let's cover the half one that we have, that we have going in. Um, that's kind of my opinion.
That sounds good. And we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that. I, I have to say, when you said it was snowing, I was expecting you to mention a sledding hill. So.
Yeah, right. Well, we, that bigger park you were talking about, I want a rope tow on that, but that's a whole nother issue. So.
We're dreaming big. That's why we're here.
Never say never, Stan. Before I die and I'm a lot older than you.
That's right. That's right.
So to pick up on the looped path here, connects back to the center of the site and this reddish tone represents essentially located play area. We're not at this stage getting into the specifics of type of play. I think that's really a future discussion with this group and with the, um, the public in the follow-up open house. Uh, yeah, I see a hand up from councillor Oakinson.
Thanks. Hey, I, I don't know if I should wait to the end of the three options, but a couple of questions. Um, particularly with citing a playground down here near the highway. What kind of protections would we build into this to keep kids off the highway?
Fantastic question and we definitely, uh, would be looking at some sort of separation fencing. Because that's a, that's a, it's a, a great consideration there with the highway being there. There is one thing in our favor is there's a significant grade difference in this part of the site. The highway stays fairly level and our site drops off. But even with that, we would look at other measures to, to provide that barrier between the two, to be sure it's extra safe. So, um, next to the play area, this rectangle here is essentially located picnic shelter. And then the, just to finish this option, the, the pedestrian path connects back to the sidewalk on Meadow Avenue. I can roll through the next couple of options and, um. Here's option two. So if we start at the same.
Can I just ask a question on that previous one? Is there, is the only entrance on the part that's off the highway there on the far? Uh, right end, right side there? Is that the entrance there?
That is, in this part right here, uh, the site is basically level with. The existing grades out on the highway. So it's one of the easier places to connect. Um, but we, we, we're studying that in more detail and there's a, the, each of the options has a slightly different connection point. So if we, uh, look at option number two, if we start basically in the same location down here at Fawn and Meadow. You'll see a winding path. Um, and the reason that this winds as much as it does is we don't have any stairs in this option. And then I guess I should point out that in each of these options, we've kept the grades, the slopes of these sidewalks. So that we're not, they're not steep enough to require handrails, um, which means in some cases they're longer and they have to, to wind a little bit more. But we think that that really adds to the, um, just the overall accessibility and it keeps the cost down as we develop these parks. Makes it a universal experience. So on the right side, we have this darker green. Uh, into these options that represents, uh, a restored vegetative edge to the park. And this lighter green represents an open lawn area.
Uh, excuse me, are those pickleball courts or what do those represent? They're near number three.
These are pickleball courts and the thinking with the location of these is being proximate to the highway. Think every time, often when we talk about pickleball courts, one thing that comes up right away is the noise factor. So. Um, if we're looking at these in this park location, we thought maybe this is one of the ideal locations. Set away from the residences as much as possible.
Dawn?
Yeah, so I like this option, not for pickleball, but if three were sports courts, uh, like basketball. I like this option because right now, if you were to drive down that street, you would find a basketball, uh, stand sitting. Right there by that, uh, second tree on, on the, whatever that street is, uh, the kids play there already. Second thing is that is very noisy and if I'm a neighbor anywhere in that neighborhood. Uh, the closer we go to Highway 26, the, the close, the more likely the noise from whatever we're doing there is going to get absorbed into the background noise. If we put the sports court all the way back on the, the south end. Uh, it's, it's going to be noisy for neighbors. So I, I like that location. And plus it moves our kids, little smaller kids further away from the highway. So those are two things that I think are important.
Those are both good in, uh, points. Thank you.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I echo what Dawn says. I would just also say that, you know, pickleball courts, you know, eight, eight and 10 year old. Kids don't really use the pickleball courts and they're very, you know, all these pickleballers come from. You know, towns away to play pickleball. And since this is a neighborhood park, I, I'm a little concerned about that, but I would definitely could see this. This, um, option as the, um. Basketball courts. Um, and then the last thing I would say is that, you know, when you have those, I like the fact that you don't have the, the, the ramp and all that stuff. On the other hand, you know, most kids aren't going to do the little serpentine route. They're just going to run straight down the fall line. So having, you know, I mean, if we don't build it, they will, just something to kind of consider.
That is definitely worth considering.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I'll just second what the last two councillors just said. This was my favorite option of the three. I know you haven't even gone over three yet, but. For all the reasons that were previously stated, so I won't need to repeat them again. And then also I, I do would prefer to have a basketball or a sport court. Versus a pickleball court back there. I could see Mayor a fantastic covered half court right on the edge of 26 as we. As we drive down. So, um, just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy style. Look good.
Yeah, I love, I love the idea of a cover. I'm back on it. I'm back on it. Thank you for that, Chris. Appreciate it. All right, let's keep going.
Um, so I will, uh, jump to the, well, I guess just to finish this one up, the player is essentially located as we've identified. This is the shelter here. So split between the street and the play area. And again, that, yeah, the pickleball court near the highway. And with that, I'll go to the third option. This one has a set of stairs, but then the ramp loops through this existing forested area. Opens up in the middle to what is a half court basketball court here, this dot here, and then one, a single pickleball court. So in this case, centrally located closer to the highway, uh, but still m- m- maybe middle of the site. This pathway loops up here where it splits to the highway sidewalk connection and then a looping path around this play area here. One side accessible, the other side with a set of stairs. And then I can go to this last slide just so we can see them side by side by side for to remind everybody of each of the options. See a couple of hands up.
Let's go Carl, Rich, and then Kathleen.
Get unmuted here. Uh, I like a variety of the different alternatives and I'm not gonna get too specific about a lot of things. But I like to be able to hear what the public is interested in seeing. One of the things that I was wondering is, is I know the mayor would prefer to have a covered. But I I wonder if we shouldn't look at some of the more inexpensive but interesting or usable kind of things, especially, uh, I'm thinking about the snowslide. Uh, there's one or two spots in the city that people like to use and um, I don't think many of them are city property, but here we could make a really inexpensive uh, piece of road. Piece of property, I mean, that has a slope, we have the slope, why not use it? Uh, other thing that I hadn't heard you talk about, which I don't know if it's already incorporated in it or not, but is uh, we did talk about some children's safety, but I'm also knowing that the parents like to watch their kids. Uh, is there options to make that more um, watchable, parents be able to watch where the kids might play? In uh, uh, different benches or uh, places for the kids to be able to be seen from the roads and such. Uh, don't need to see that in any particular one, but I do like the idea of providing some way for parents to feel more secure about their kids. Um, I think I like that one a lot. One of the things that uh, I'll finish up with is biodiversity. I I like the idea of the trees and some of the vegetation being left behind, but I also want to make sure we don't put it in a place where we um, make it isolated. Uh, connectivity between one place of the uh, park and some of the rest of the city is really important. So I did see you had habitat improvement in one of your points about protecting and constructing the parks. So that's really important for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go Rich and then Kathleen.
Yeah, uh, I'm like Carl, I'm gonna ask a bunch of questions if I get way too far in the weeds here. Um, so with that being said, uh, I wanna thank Stan for bringing up the um, the covered ports. Uh, it's absolutely a gap in the city and and for all the reasons that were already been discussed. Um, I, I do notice so. Well, a half court, I think would be good. I, I don't know if it's gonna get the use um, that a full court would. And so whether that means we explore um, covering a full court that we already have in the city or turning one of these half courts into a full court, I don't know how big the pickleball area is um, to, to that, if it's sizable for a full court, I think that would be a better bang for our buck. Um, and then the last question I have is, is how does this align with the Bull Run um, as they develop that area, the park space? If they're gonna contribute, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly where it was allotted. Do they, do they butt up to each other? Or um, is this gonna be, are they gonna have two parks bang bang right in that area?
In terms of where the edge of the development is?
Not where the edge of the development, correct me if I'm wrong, they have to provide some land or are they just paying the SDCs? Uh, I can't remember the.
Half of this uh, the eastern half of the park was dedicated by that developer for to create.
Yeah, we, we originally had like an acre and a quarter or something, and now we have three point one five acres. And the development on Bull Run Terrace will be just to the east there. It, you know, it'll, it'll be kind of a putting up this. So they'll be coming from that direction.
So then I just really wanna echo that. Um, I, I personally think if we're gonna invest this money to invest for a full court uh, covered basketball area, um, especially given the apartments and all of those things there, I think it's gonna get a lot more. Um, can say, it's gonna provide double the space for somebody that wants to use a half court, obviously, or it will allow games to be played. I think it'll get a lot better uh, use.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Kathleen?
Yeah, I wanna, I agree with everybody, everything everybody has said so far. I like your idea to stand about having that covered court. Uh, bask full court there, visible from the highway. Um, I hope we're just going with chain link fence, cause I think the visibility of of that park is kind of a nice welcome to the town. Rather than putting up some sort of, you know, highway wall or something like that. Um, the, and I like, again, just kind of making sure that we've got a, a planned access point on the east side of the park that brings those people that are coming in. Um, the other question that came up and will, you know, I listened to the Parks Board meeting where they kind of uh, not where they reviewed these, but the, where they kind of reviewed original plans and they brought up the, there is a link. Uh, it's called T thirty-eight in the Trails Master Plan to link this park up with Tickle Creek Trail. And I'm just curious about, you know, how, we wanna make sure whatever we design here lines up with that in the future with the development that's, you know, they've already kind of identified some, not a plat, but at least some lots for the duplexes to the south. And I just wanna make sure that whatever we're doing trail-wise lines up with or pass or whatever lines up with how we're getting them in the future to the Tickle Creek Trail. And that may be, you know, these paths leading to a sidewalk that then, you know, they walk down the sidewalk on Antler Boulevard or whatever that's called. Or, or I don't know what it is, but I just wanna make sure that we've kind of anticipated it because it is in the master plan and and making sure that we're not having people, for example, have to cross the street mid-block or something like that. Isn't that, I love the concepts and I'm uh, excited to hear what the neighbors have to say. I am kind of more interested in kind of maybe the more traditional playground stuff. Uh, the nature stuff is, I'm not convinced that that's um, all that. But I mean, that's kind of what the woods are for. Um, I'd be curious what the neighbors will have to say. And and I guess what I would hope is that we develop, you know, with this playground, especially if you're looking at option two, kind of having a um, you know, a tot lot area and then something for the eight-year-olds and ten-year-olds to kind of uh, go nuts on. So you've got a little bit of separation in, in some of that because the, it just works better and reduces conflicts. But great job on all this. Thank you, Rochelle and your team. And Langhansen, you guys have really done a great job. I really enjoy seeing this.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited to go out this Wednesday, as Rochelle mentioned, and just give that public input. It's always fun to develop different options, see when, which ones gain traction, which elements the public really responds to.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Don. I see a hand up as we get ready to wrap up and then I'll go to Lori.
Yeah, I just make it a comment about chain link. I don't think we allow chain link. Uh, I makes, I think our code prohibits it.
I think the point is a, a visible, something that allows the park to.
Yeah, the principle behind, that's fine. Thanks.
Yeah, cool, thanks. Um, Lori?
Want to make sure I was unmute. You can stop screen sharing if you want. It's up to you. Uh, just a, a, a couple of things. Uh, the Parks Board had a pretty robust conversation uh, about these three parks and I'm super excited uh, to hear what the community feedback is. Um, a couple of things, one is um, keep in mind this park is small. Um, some of you guys have some great ideas, but the actual land mass of this park is not very big. So um, uh, when we start talking about, you know, things to put in there, it's uh, you're gonna use that space up super quick. So uh, I encourage you to uh, maybe drive by and take a look at that piece of property, uh, if you get a chance. Um, and then uh, just a comment and you, this won't come to any shock or surprise to most of you, cause you've heard me before. But uh, we continue to build parks, which is awesome and I love it, but our staff isn't getting any bigger. And so uh, I would really like some sort of uh, um, uh, assessment, uh, Rochelle, if you get a minute on like hours that are gonna be spent uh, trying to maintain these parks. Um, and then what, what staff needs are gonna be required for that, cause we've got a big community park going in. And uh, you know, uh, as Winterfest gets bigger and we get more excited about stuff and this is great, it's great for our community. But uh, I also recognize that I wanna keep the staff we have and I don't want them to feel like they're drowning in work and that they can't keep up. So we definitely need to look at additional staff.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for the feedback and comments. Thank you again, uh, as said, to staff for all the work put together on this. And uh, remind me, what was the timeline? When do we think from beginning to end, uh, our community would enjoy this park?
We are roughly looking at um, excuse me, through the spring, continuing public engagement and then really diving into the construction documents through end of summer, going into permitting and bidding and then groundbreaking early next year.
Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving ahead with our agenda, let me pull it back up here. Um, we will go to our report from our city manager. Tyler, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Start with uh, let's see, one piece of good news, the parking lot purchase on Pioneer closed this afternoon and was successfully reported. So that uh, is now city-owned property and we'll revisit uh, the discussion around what to do beyond just a parking lot there and what type of parking restrictions and things like that in the near future, but for the time being, we've got that uh, checked off the list. Also happy to report that Cedar Creek Trail will have its grand opening April sixth. And the first fifty people that attend will receive a commemorative gift. So Rochelle and her team have been hard at work in getting that trail uh, constructed and ready to open to the public. And so we're very excited to have that here in the very near future. Uh, we also got a request from Plaquemines County late last week about a letter of support for a grant to uh, rebuild, repair the Bull Run Bridge. I think that it's a wise uh, decision for us to support that, since many of our community members use it. However, I would say that it might be wise to also say if we are going to support a county ask, we should be asking for the county to support the numerous developers that we take on uh, on their behalf. So looking for a little bit of head nods from the council if you're comfortable with that approach, that we also need support for our developers. I see thumbs up and not, so I'm gonna take that as a, as a yes. All right. Thank you very much. Um, let's see here, just a few more items. Uh, we do have a proposed ordinance that we're gonna be bringing back before the council here again in the near future to provide a temporary one-time extension for any land use approvals that may expire during this moratorium. I wanna recognize that some um, lando- landowners have invested resources into those projects and they're unable to move forward at this uh, exact moment in time due to the moratorium, so granting an extension so they are able to uh, stay um, active going forward. So we'll bring that up uh, in, in a meeting in the near future and have a more robust conversation about that. Put it all on your radar. Um, Nellie has been hard at work trying to secure funding for us for our wastewater project. Uh, seems like the funding is shrinking through this short session. And we have her scheduled to be in attendance at the next council meeting to provide a session uh, recap. I won't steal any more of session um, thunder. I'll leave that for the mayor. If he wants to add anything about what's been going on in Salem. We'll just wait until the next meeting with Nellie for a recap. Um, and then last but not least, just a quick heads up to the council that we have received a couple of records requests for some executive session materials and minutes. Uh, just wanted to put that on your radar that uh, those records requests come in. Uh, obviously, the city's position is that executive session materials are confidential and exempt from uh, disclosure. But wanted you to be aware that the request was here and we're working with our attorney's office to make sure we comply with that request as much as we possible. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for that, Tyler. Uh, with that, we'll get into our counselor and committee reports. Uh, per usual, we'll start with you, Don.
Cool. Thanks. And um, we, we um, it's been a rough couple of weeks, few weeks. Uh, I, I just wanna uh, you know, Tyler, I, I like a lot of, I like an awful lot of what's been going on. But obviously, there's some things that, that, you know, looking back, I'm sure we'll all say we could have done a little better, a little different. The mayor sent out a letter uh, earlier, a couple of weeks ago, I don't know, a week and a half ago uh, with some suggestions about posting the released and redacted uh, comment cards. And it doesn't appear that was acted on. I felt like that was a, a reasonable request, given that the media uh, in the recent Hoodview News uh, took a very lopsided view of the, of those cards. And um, I, I, I think we owe it to the community to, at this point, to be as transparent as possible and put those things out there. Otherwise, only half the story or pieces, not even half the story. I don't even know what story's being told anymore. It doesn't resemble any truth. So, you know, the truth is disappearing and I think uh, we need to be transparent as where we can with, with those kinds of things where the courts have already ordered us to. So I'm in favor of having those posted uh, officially on the city, not just on somebody's uh, Facebook page. So um, I do wanna call out Mike Wiley and Joan Wiley as editors and publishers of the, the Hoodview News. And maybe they'll be listening to this, maybe they won't, but when we have a newspaper, we expect them to do the best they can to present all the facts and all the sides of the story. And their community expects that and there's a responsibility there. And for whatever reason, Mike uh, chose to, in this most recent-ish article, to really filter out and leave out key facts that he was well aware of. I spent more than probably an hour on the phone with him going over many of those things. Not a single point that he and I made showed up in either his last month's article or this one, because it didn't fit the narrative that he was going with. And I just wanna call that out because there needs to be, you know, the media holds us accountable, but we gotta hold them accountable too. But he did make um, some, some good point in the editorial about the upcoming elections, the fact that uh, you wanna make a change, you've gotta run. You can't just vote people out. You don't vote people out, you vote people in. And I think all of us at some point in time are going to be done with our service here. And the question is, who are we grooming? Who are we training and raising up to be the next generation of leaders? How are we getting them involved and ready to take over for us? And uh, so to that end, um, just if anybody is listening, you guys, obviously you're already here. But uh, if anybody watches this again and they're interested in running for office, do what I did. I called and talked to almost every city counselor. I found out what was involved. And uh, even if you're running against me, call me. I'll tell you what's, I'll tell you the reality of what it takes. And let's find those, that next generation. So that's, that's my report for today. Thank you all and uh, next.
Thank, thank you, Don. Um, Carl?
Okay, I, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but uh, since Don did, I um, I did submit an opinion article into the Hoodview News. And um, it was, it is part of the theme I was gonna bring up anyway. In that I think the city is going through quite a bit of emotion at the moment. It's not just some of the decisions that we made or has been made about the, our police chief. But it's also watching the, the old Bignell pool go down and the Cedar Ridge, old Cedar Ridge buildings disappear. There's a lot of, I don't know, loss of history, maybe changing in the, the guards and that kind of stuff. And Don, you're, you're perfectly right about the fact that we, we need to look to the future of Sandy and the decisions we make uh, in this council and uh, as people write comments in either the media or the paper. We, we need to think about what the future is and where Sandy needs to go. And those kind of decisions ought to be in our minds about it. And really, before we start throwing statements out there, we need to be able to back them up with facts rather than just opinions. And um, some of the statements I've heard outside of the paper, almost as bad as what I can see in some of the paper statements. So there's a lot of emotion going on right now. Certainly in my world, I see a lot of emotion and, and uh, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get through this with the least amount of, of uh, drama as possible. Cause we're gonna have a police chief, we're gonna have a park, we're gonna have the things that are changing and we're a growing community. And I know some people don't think that we should grow, but you just about can't stop growth in whatever feature we do. And I'm, I'm pretty excited about the future. And uh, I think that's something really to be important about, so. So with that, um, just one thing that I participated in uh, on Saturday was uh, the uh, uh, senior citizens uh, department put together a Meals on Wheels dinner and uh, D thirty-one supported that and I think they made eight hundred dollars to support. D31 supported that. And I think they made $800 to support meals for the seniors. And there's going to be some more moneymakers related to that. And I think that's really important to be part of. And that's a community piece that I think since I'm working my way towards that kind of a, I'm not quite there yet. So I think Kathleen, you mentioned you were a little old, you haven't got there till you get to be my age. So there is a lot to be said there. So with that, I'm going to leave a go. And, oh, I just wanted to say that my personal life has become very busy. And if I don't answer your emails or your text messages immediately, I'm probably kind of busy. So, but be patient with me. I'm trying to keep up with everything. So thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Carl. With that, next up is Kathleen.
Did, just a quick question, was there any response yet from the county, Gary, or anybody on the library? And you don't have to tell me what it was, just let me know if there was a response.
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. The library folks are, my liaison report is that they are, have been meeting with the Economic Development Council, the Parks Board and other folks talking about the bookmobile and the opportunities it would bring. They've talked about going after Meyer Trust Grant and, you know, getting support from all of us to help with that. So as I understand, I think the, you know, we gave 150,000 and they're looking for, I think the latest estimates, the original rig they wanted to buy is no longer available. And they're looking at stuff around 298,000, 298,000. So there, I think they have really good opportunities for grants because this is something that those kind of folks really support. So I'm excited about that. Regarding kind of some of the comments Don made, I too just continue to kind of feel not lose sleep anymore, but I just concern. And I do appreciate the leadership that Tyler and his staff have kind of brought to it, bringing in Kim and just the concern. I have concern for the, you know, how everything's affecting the, our police officers and the rest of the staff there at the police department, other staff on, in the city, our city managers and his staff and HR and how it's affecting the community. And I'm, I'm sad that we're in this spot. I'm hopeful that we can get through it and get a smooth transition kind of moving forward. I'm also concerned for how, how this affected the, you know, two of the three applicants we have for the job because it obviously affects them too. So I'm looking forward to moving past this and welcoming a new chief, assuming the background check goes through and, and moving on. I think that's about all I had.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up, we have Rich.
Yeah, I'm not going to continue to, I think a lot has already been said, but I do want to say that I do agree with about 90% of it. With that being said, I, on a different note, as far as city, I do think that things should be released on the city website. I do want to echo that as a 100% support. But with that being said, I also wanted to give credit to Tyler and Jeff. I have noticed on all the Facebook stuff that I feel like we're responding a lot better to community things. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that. I've noticed that and pass along a thank you. And then lastly, I think Kathleen really hit it on the head as far as the employees and supporting them. And so I want to make sure that we continue to support the, the employees at Sandy PD and that as this process moves forward, that they're, they're, they feel valued regardless of where they stand. And, but also that any issues that they're brought forward, that they're getting the proper whistleblower training or that they feel comfortable bringing forward new issues that may come up or come out of this. So I really wanted to echo that and make sure that that's being acknowledged or being included. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Chris? I'm sorry. No, I skipped you, Lori. Lori first, then Chris.
That's okay. No big deal. Since Tyler brought up the Bull Run Bridge, I thought I, I don't know if you guys know this, little piece of history that I've always found super interesting, is the Bull Run Bridge is part of the old Burnside Bridge and has been there over the Bull Run since 1926. So it's an old bridge, needs a lot of work. So it's kind of a constant thing. It's pretty cool. Most of my report, we already talked about because I would have been talking about the, the parks update. But I did want to, since Carl, you brought up the Meals on Wheels fundraiser, which is super important. I'm glad that was successful. But I'm sure you guys saw, it was posted on social media. It's also on the city's Facebook page. Tomorrow is a fundraiser all day at one of the taco trucks there in Sanlania. Part of the proceeds will also go to Meals on Wheels. So give them your business tomorrow if you're looking for something to eat. And then there's a couple of others, March 13th at Smokey Hearth, March 15th at Scoop and Swirl, the 21st at Panda Express, 22nd at Mountain Mocha and the 29th at Dairy Queen. So a great opportunity for us to support our local businesses as well as do a little fundraising for, for Meals on Wheels for those seniors. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Lori. I'm Chris.
Yeah, my planning commission liaison update is, I think councillor Walker will be happy. We're in the planning commission, we reviewed the HCA and the EOA, which is the Housing Capacity Analysis and Economic Opportunity Analysis Draft Report. That should be coming to city council here soon. So we get an idea of what the properties we have available to us to collect. So that was really interesting during, during last week's meeting. Did not have an economic meeting this week, so no, no update there. I'll reiterate what councillor Hookinson said about the Hoodview. I was kind of caught off guard by a telephone call that happened to be Wiley. And he printed about a quarter of what we talked about. But he didn't represent me in a poor light. It was, he really said what I said. We need to look at that process a little better. And I said that at the first meeting, so I don't need to repeat it now. But I do want to show support for the candidate, you know, due process for background check and let that process run its course. And I'm just, it makes me ill to read the comments that take place. And I feel for him and I also feel for the other applicant from out of state that, that's being thrown into this as well. So I'm just, my, my heart goes out to them, but I stand true by my word. I'm going to let the process take care of itself, which I think it is and I support it. Other than that, thank the staff for the, the report today on, on the, you know, the Bell Street properties. You gave me the, the detailed analysis I needed to make a good recommendation, which we moved to motion. So thank you for bringing that back. And other than that, I would like to say that I have three adults, well, myself and two other adults that live in my household and all three of us now live and work in Sandy. The third, the third person in my house just got a job this week at, at Shadow Glass here in Sandy. So we're working, living in Sandy and working in Sandy and making good wage doing it. So it can be done. Thank you.
Right. That's great. Thank you, Chris. Well, for my report, just a couple of things real quick is I did express our concerns about what's going on over at Best Western during the mayor's and chair meeting here this past week. Really, my concern is, is it's how hard it is to navigate the situation as to what's going on over there. As I try to navigate it, we have a lot of finger pointing as far as it being a county voucher or a state voucher, you know, who's really doing the navigating here. We have a commitment that at the next mayor's and chair meeting, that they'll be bringing in the folks from Clackamas County that are responsible and kind of at least attempting to explain to us kind of what's going on and what the process is. And then if we have concerns, how do we raise those concerns and kind of navigate what's really going on? So we continue to kind of go down that rabbit hole and try to investigate it. And I'll continue to kind of invest, to update our councils as we, as we move forward. Lots been said on the police chief staff, obviously, over the weekend, last weekend. I made the decisions on my private campaign page to release those pub, already released publicly comment cards. And it's been expressed by different councillors here. I think, you know, we can't control what is written in the media. Goodness knows, over my last couple of years, I've certainly tried. And, you know, to little, to little success. But one thing I've learned is all we can do is represent the facts and offer the facts and the information. And then those kind of get disseminated, you know, how they be. Yeah, I just want to reiterate kind of what Chris and others have said. I know Kathleen has said it kind of offline. I might have mentioned a little bit in her comments. It's just sick. Just you feel sick thinking about some of the things that are discussed and some of the things that, you know, are talked about by our neighbors and stuff and the comment cards, you know, being released. I think that's not fun for a lot of people. It's not fun for the folks that have raised those concerns. It's not fun for folks that are kind of the focus of those concerns. It's a big reason why I think we tried to respect people's privacy. But, you know, the decision was made by the district attorney to release those and those are released. Now they're, they're information that's out there. And so, you know, I, I believe in Tyler and Jeff and the leadership team at City Hall and our council all trying to really kind of make the best of a really hard situation that's going on in our community right now. And I want to thank Kim Yamashita for coming back to our city for, for a time being and showing leadership, stable leadership over our police department. I think that's really important. You know, as you read some of those, those cards, and I only refer to them because they're public, you do get a sense that there's, you know, there's a little division, right? There's a little bit of division within the staff of the police department and, and, and different folks over leadership. And, and my hope is, is over the next several weeks and months ahead, that we can bring that together, right? And really create that stable leadership and, and really have a department. We continue to be incredibly proud of the men and women that serve in our police department. And, and it's our, it's our duty to, to ensure stable leadership. And so I know I'm focused on that. I know Tyler and our folks at City Hall are focused on that and, and making sure that we have a stable future for, for our folks that really put their lives on the line every day for, for our community. So with that, exciting meeting tonight. I'm excited to see that covered basketball court and, and the playground, different things going on and just really appreciate the public service that everybody puts in. So with that, I will close tonight's city council meeting. Thank you, everybody.